Passes with the exception of Matt. All right. We have an opportunity for public comment. Would anyone like to share?
That baby's so cute.
I'll be really quick. My name is Maggie Dobson. I graduated from Rhinebeck in 99. I'm a resident of the St. John's Street in Rhinebeck. And my oldest son is a kindergarten or a chancellor. I wanted to ask a question about the planning enrollment and also the long-range planning community action committee goals. And I guess we have proposals to the board in February. I heard that the incoming kindergarten class currently has about 40 children registered. My son's kindergarten class has about 15,000 students. And this year, the kindergarten class has about 100 students, which puts the enrollment down about 40 percent. While I understand that the planning enrollment is an issue for most school districts in our state, it is declining more rapidly at Rhinebeck than other comparable schools in our area.
I was a teacher to the district.
It is declining more rapidly at Rhinebeck than other comparable schools in our area. If you do the senior kindergarten class to kindergarten, the class record is down about 32 percent and the staff pool is down about 8 percent. I took part along with the long-range planning community action committee where we came up with ideas to address some of the issues facing Rhinebeck's schools. One idea we discussed was decreasing tuition for out-of-district students. I wanted to ask if there's a plan for the board to consider possibly about some of the recommendations that the long-range planning community action committee discussed, specifically decreasing tuition for out-of-district students would be a way to attract more students to our school without emptying classrooms and also bring more money to our schools. Spacken Hill lowered tuition a few years ago to $12,000 and saw an increase in their out-of-district enrollment. I believe in 2018, they had 18 to 14 students, which brought in over $100,000. Lower tuition even more would likely result in higher out-of-district enrollment. Both Spacken Hill and Rhinebeck have out-of-district tuition policies that state that they will accept students at the discretion of the superintendent, only does not add cost per day to the school, which is an option that I assume you can do as well. Also, Spacken Hill charges more and more students that require special fees, which we may need to clarify by state laws. I'm worried that if we continue to see a planning enrollment without having a plan to attract more students, then we will have to consider closing the school and get other districts as a force to do. That's it. Thank you.
Okay. Oh, 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 more.
Was walking up.
Sorry.
Susan St. Clair, Rhinebeck resident and RT president. I just wanted to kind of address some of the same questions, which had to do with what the board's decision, the district's decision is going to be regarding the number of sections of kindergarten next year. I know as well, we have a lower number right now in terms of making determination if you would run two or three sections. I just want to encourage you to consider to run the three sections because as we know, the lower class sizes in K in particular, in one and two, is hugely instrumental and important as the students are moving up. This is the time that students are getting acclimated to the educational process and socialization. And if we have larger kindergarten classes, that's going to be much more difficult to do. Kathy Lane with me, who's a kindergarten teacher, she did not have any say. All of that would be extremely true. So just encouraging you, you know, to hopefully again, see yourselves as to having three sections of kindergarten. I think it will be very well worth it and a great investment in our students. They, those kids at young age need lower numbers. Thank you.
Yes?
Sorry, I don't understand. Just real quick. My name is John Zenz. I'm the athletic director at Johnny Coleman High School. And I just want to say thank you to Superintendent Phelan, to Dr. Dabport, Steve Boucher, and the board and the district for working with us as far as JV baseball this year. I think it worked out well for everyone involved and certainly did for our days. I had a chance to play with you guys and they all had a great, you know, great experience. You'd get as many games as you'd like with the weather, but I just wanted, you know, thank you for working with us on that. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff.
Yes?
Stacy Staliker, Emily's assistant, as well as anti-president. I just want to say how lucky I feel that everybody who's retiring this year, because of my position in the district, I've had a chance to deal with at some point during my three short years. And I just want to say it's been a really invaluable thing to have each one of them as part of my first three years in the district.
That's very nice. Thank you. Does anybody else have a comment? No? All right. Well, it is our great pleasure to be able to move on to the retiree recognition. So I want to welcome you all and thank you for coming to recognize the extraordinary work of your colleagues tonight. We have nine retirees this year, five from chancellor, four from the high school. Collectively, they've served 225 years in the district. Pretty amazing. If you do the quick math, that's an average of 25 years per person. Really quite a testament. Those kinds of numbers speak to the dedication they have to their work and the bonds they have, they've shared with their colleagues and their students. We're incredibly grateful that they've given so much to our Rhinebeck family. So I'm going to start in chancellor and then move my way up to the high school. Robin Berger, who sadly isn't here tonight, has been our ESL and literacy teacher since September 2007. She works with those students who come to us with language barriers and supports them to gain access to English and the lessons taught in the classroom. She's always been available to her colleagues when they needed advice or support in the classroom and has been committed to working collaboratively to support all students to reach their potential. And we thank her for those wonderful attributes. Jackie Diedrich, also sadly missing tonight, began at chancellor in September of 1991 and has had the opportunity to work at several grade levels throughout her career at chancellor. She takes great pride in the connections she makes, not only with her students, but with their parents as well. She's incredibly approachable and eager to work cooperatively with her colleagues who will no doubt miss the intoxicating smell of popcorn wafting down the halls in the afternoon as Jackie pops her favorite afternoon pick-me-up. Sandy Kane began working in the district in September 1982. She's been teaching and singing as an employee since then, but started her career as a child when she attended school here. Perhaps it was her musical experience at chancellor that inspired her to instill a love of music in each child who has stood on our stages, picked up a musical instrument or simply appreciated the talents of their classmates. Certainly, there's not a person in the Rhinebeck family who wouldn't tell you that she is as motivated and engaged today as she was the day she began teaching. One of her colleagues described her as one of those rare people that doesn't have a single black spot on her soul. And we won't... Deborah Berg began working at chancellor in September 1989. She's always put tremendous value in the power of learning for her students, young faculty members just starting out, and for herself. In fact, she was Rachel Rinalli's teacher when she attended chancellor. I remember well her love of books, the craft of storytelling, and the countless children who look forward to having Mrs. Roberg so that they could write their first grade novel, my daughter included. Deb Scalanti has been a teaching assistant at chancellor since 1995. It's been said that she's quite possibly one of the most flexible professional people you ever want to meet, someone you can trust to get the job done no matter what's asked of her. She's one of those sunny people who always has a smile on her face. There's not a student or a colleague who doesn't want to stop to talk to Deb during the day. Moving on to the high school. Three of the four high school retirees are highly dedicated special education staff. Joanna Bryant, as our most senior retiree, began her career in Rhinebeck in November 1979 and was always in her classroom. It took me, I had to double check. She's always in her classroom, supporting juniors and seniors across the curriculum as they completed their high school careers. In her quiet, gentle, and invincible way, she helped students to master the learning standards and exemplified our commitment to supporting the whole child. Thank you. Susan Rusi joined us in September 1999. She performed a crucial role in supporting our ninth grade students as they began their tradition, their transition to high school. Due to her commitment and dedication, students developed the confidence, study habits, and responsibility necessary to be successful in challenging academic classes at the beginning of their high school careers and throughout their high school season. Susan Volin began in the district in September 1995. She's been a member of the building level planning team, of the high school child study team, and department chair. Susan's commitment to supporting each student and to equity for all students helped to ensure that no stone was left unturned in providing the supports and interventions our students needed, ensuring that every student could meet their potential. Our special education teachers are the champions of the rights of students with disabilities. Their ability to lift each of their students up to reach their goals can't be overstated. Each one of these dedicated professionals has truly made a difference to each one of the kids in their charge. And finally, Mary Winkler. I saw you before. You're over here. Hello, hiding. Mary joined us in September 1996. She's held many positions in the district. She began at chancellor as a monitor and playground aide before moving over to the high school, where she continued to keep watchful eye over our kids. She then took on several secretarial positions prior to her final posting in the guidance office. Of Mary, one colleague notes, "Mary Winkler is the fabric of what makes Rhinebeck schools such a great place to work and for families to raise their children. She has a warm smile and engaging demeanor and a larger-than-life personality that makes coming to work every day a wonderful experience." Mary herself has said that Rhinebeck has an incredible staff and supportive faculty. "Our kids are lucky," she says. "They're getting great education," all thanks to these and the rest of the incredible staff here in Rhinebeck. We want to extend our most sincere thanks to each of you for your dedication, not only to the district, but most important to the children whose lives you've shaped and nurtured during your time in Rhinebeck. We wish you all the best in the next chapters of your lives and hope you'll come back and visit. Now... So if it please the board, I would like to suspend the rules so that we can have cake. May I have a motion? So moved. Second? All those in favor. Let's eat cake. All right. May I have a motion to come back into regular session? So moved. All those in favor. That's unanimous. That motion passes. We have an opportunity to hear from Emily Davidson.
Who is, who is remain? I currently may look at the agenda and decide to scoot out while I'm...
Don't take it personally.
So, thank you so much for having me towards the end of this school year, we're approaching the final days. And I was asked to speak about the social and emotional wellness goal that the Board of Education developed this year. And as an administrator who supports all of the, all of the schools of various ways, as well as administrator who meets on a regular basis with the PPS, the people personnel staff, it did make most sense for me to gather a lot of this information. So I provided for you a document, which is several pages. It's a little chart. I'm a visual person. And so at the top, I just reiterated the board's education goal and wanted to just break on what has happened over the course of this year and what is to come over the course of next year and beyond. And so I'll walk through each of these, some of these pieces, and it looks like this. I don't know what page number that was.
We're doing the...
4.2.
So I'll start because this is a broad picture. This is another addition initiative, K through 12 programming. And then we'll move into the guidance plan more specifically. And so I'll walk through this document with you. The questions that I can answer, that I can speak directly to, I will be happy to do so. If there's a question you have that I can't specifically answer, I will, I will make sure I speak with my colleagues who've been interested colleagues who do that. So over the 2018-19 school year, there have been several K through 12 initiatives. One is in the area that falls under the area of social emotional wellness for our students. So one of those areas is professional development. So the professional development that we've provided across K through 12 programming and faculty was in the area of culturally responsive instruction, conflict cycle, teaching empathy. And what is not listed there, but it's sort of, I know that we are aware of this, which is the review of the school time survey and the results will be playing here as well. And so those pieces, these topics, these, these areas of discussion took place K through K through 12. In addition, another K through 12 initiative was the revision of the guidance plan, which I will, I will go into a little bit more detail as we look over that guidance plan in particular after we review that. And then the health and wellness will speak to the parenting workshop, the parenting at the age of anxiety workshop, and the continuing work from their committee. But that did serve our families across the district. In this, in the chancellor of the Greenston Elementary School, we piloted two programs. One was a pilot second step, which is an explicitly evidence-based, explicitly constructed, evidence-based social emotional learning curriculum. It was provided to us at no cost by the, by Duchess County, and it's used throughout the, throughout the region to address SEL needs in various schools. And then the research went down with fidelity is strong, and so we brought it on as a pilot. We have that curriculum in kindergarten through fifth grade, but we wanted to balance that out with the Great Body Shop work, an initiative that Mr. King was so, was desiring to have in place in terms of meeting the health mandate and requirements. And so in three through five, we also piloted Great Body Shop. And so we're thrilled that we've been able to do that. We utilized the support of the special area teachers to work collaboratively with the classroom teachers to deliver that instruction. And it totally, the students learn to listen with their, they have special names for their, their ears and their, their eyes. And so you'll see, teachers will see students doing this in the classroom. And if you don't know, you'll think that there's something amiss, but they're really just zooming in on the instruction and using their, their listening skills. And so it's really, it's a really great tool to teach our youngest students who, who need explicit instruction in the area of social emotional learning, self-regulation, conflict resolution, as well as just social dynamics. Anderson Center for Autism has, this is the second year, has been working on a regular basis with our, with, in this year, it was our members of our K through two faculty to provide strategic interventions for our students within the, within those classrooms. They may be students with autism, they may be students with other executive functioning abilities, they may be general education students, they may be, they may be looking at the entire class structure, the environmental layout, routines, all of those things that do impact behavior. And think about how we can help to shift behavior by instructional strategies and loops. And so that workshop, that work was, was a great opportunity to, to give the teachers some coaching within the classroom. So the Anderson Consultative Behaviors go into the classroom and observe and provide feedback. And the teachers really responded well to that. And then they, on the alternating ones, will have a short two-hour professional development on a, on a unit or a topic. So it was a nice balance of direct instruction for the teachers and then the follow-up classroom application. And then the PDIS, this is the second year running positive behavior intervention incentive program at the elementary school. And so I'm not sure, I'm sure you've all been at the elementary school during those morning announcements when Mr. King speaks of a moment where they were celebrating the kindness or perseverance of a student in the elementary school. And that has been hugely positive in terms of building community and positive culture in the elementary school. In the sixth grade at Buckley Middle School, Mr. Conductor may have spoken earlier this year about the fearless living program that has been in this, going on in the sixth grade. And that's working on building resilience, perseverance through challenges, being your own champion. And that, that is a tier one. All, all students are receiving that, that type of instruction. And then throughout the year, our counseling staff, who have a variety of different skill sets, have been, have been pushing into the classrooms, providing instruction to students and to faculty about how to calm yourself, how to prepare for a test. Maybe there's some, some journaling that happens before an exam, things that are being tried in the classroom, talking about what a stress response is, why we have it, what brings us stress, what we can do to manage that stress. And they, they, they have this year, I would say more than any other year that I've been here, when I'm present here, have not been taught here, been in the classroom and having those conversations. And so they've been recorded to make that. So in the high school, we've been working on establishing counseling groups. And so for example, we have a group that works, a group of our, of high school students who work with the school counselor, and they do some kind of weight training and some physical activity while also engaging in conversation and building rapport, talking about goal setting, but not in a sit-down, let's, you know, process our feelings and make an action plan, but in a, in a way that's accessible to, to, to those students and meet those students' needs. Alternately, our school social worker has been working on developing counseling groups. And it started with one to address the needs of our students with mental health issues, especially anxiety. When some of our students return from acute mental health care, what they, what they report often, and this is an angle, is that it's the group setting, whether it's in a hospital that they've been in or in a treatment center, it's the counseling group that they've found to be most effective because they realize they're not alone. And so, so that's something that we're to expand this year. Ms. Rodier is also working and has been exploring establishing a space for, to teach relaxation mindfulness techniques, and is working with Dr. Dabport to put those into place before high stakes exams, so they can get those reading exams and giving a space for students to kind of be composed and calm. A somewhat of an extension of the middle school work that is instruction in the classroom. This is, students can elect to go to these spaces, like a drop-in, council, relaxation space. The faculty, the faculty at the high school has also been in discussion of adopting Ruler and the following year, which is next year. And so the conversation about working with Yale, with Yale University to explore implementation of the SEL program Ruler, which really looks at providing, providing staff with training that they need in order for students, for them to explore with students, the ability to recognize their emotion, understand their emotions, label them, express them appropriately, and regulate them. And so there are a number of different tools that go along with that program that would be implemented school-wide. And that would, and those conversations happen this year about potential implementation and looking forward to having some of our staff trained in that so they can turn to that for next year. And then the high school student leadership had the opportunity to be a partner with Libby, who has, who provided us professional development in the area of empathy and has been a partner of the Rhinebeck School District for a number of years. And they, they found an alternative to the Pet Valley, which was the hockey last Friday. And so they, they had some work, exploration work that they did with Mr. Jeter, Dr. Lee. That was, those are kind of some of the things that happened over the course of the year. And there are a lot of different pieces. Any questions about any of these activities for this year?
Sorry. Go ahead. The counseling in the middle school, with the push-in, was that through all three grades or was that still for sixth grade?
There were some sixth grade. It depended on the partnerships between the counseling staff and the teachers. And so there was, it happened in the eighth grade, it happened in the sixth grade, and I believe there were six opportunities in the seventh grade as well.
Thank you.
And my question's about the counseling groups. Your, your illustrations were of kids who were on the more extreme side of anxiety. What about kids who sort of float through their day feeling just kind of anxious and, but thinking that that's normal for me? You know, how, how are we, how are the counseling groups sort of set up to try to catch all kids who may be struggling with something that isn't diagnosed?
Well, one of those ways is go to that relaxation center, coach themselves to seek that space. But also if there's a referral and the school counselor meets with a student and they appear to have, experiencing a great deal of stress, then they could be integrated into a group such as, such as what I've described. And so while I, I did, I did draw that connection to our more, students with more significant needs, I think that that just highlights and speaks to the needs for any student who has a mental health need to have, find connection and then support within their training. They have the feeling they're the only one. We want to say they're safe, you are not. But they need to see that. So it's, it's difficult because they're teenagers and, but it's, so it's a slow process. It's warming them up. There's a lot of trust that needs to be built before those, those groups can be formed. And sometimes they start off just as dyads and then they grow from there. So it's, there are a couple of challenges that we, we, we're aware of that we need to overcome. One is scheduling. And so thinking about our students who we know who have been grouped together and who benefit from that group, trying to look at their schedules to find that common time so that they're not making a lot of classes, core classes. And so, so that's, that's one piece. And the other piece is sort of breaking down that stigma. And so the idea of the more we talk about, we, the more we explore SEL and the more we integrate Ruler in a lot of these conversations into our tier one, the more students have instruction, the more students will be aware of their needs and be able to start to self-advocate. Because anxiety, depression, those are, those are internal experiences that may not always be present and that's on the external for the teachers or the counselors even to see their work.
Can you talk a little bit more about the Ruler, the, the staff training, like what that, what that looks like a little bit?
So there will be, we believe it's five staff members will be trained over a number of days in the, in the fall. Two, and they will, a partner will conduct the west stretch for Bosie's. They will be, they will be trained on the tools that have been used, found to be effective in the delivery of the instruction. And then they will come and they will turnkey that instruction. And so some of the tools are, for example, well, first of all, just the acronym of Ruler and the being able to help students move through the understanding of their, their emotions, being able to recognize that, being able to express them and also regulate them. But also with that, there are tools such as the mood meter. And so it's developed, it's integrating the mood meter into classrooms in a, in a seamless way so that students can access that and have that opportunity to self-identify how they're feeling within a, within a given class, at a given time of the day, and so that they can then think about ways to kind of pull those feelings that they're...
Do you know, are there any, in this training, it sounds like it's how the staff might handle students. Is there any part of the training that deals with maybe how the things that the staff might do? Something that comes to my mind is something I've heard from students recently, and I can go back to when I was in school, something about expectations about what's coming next that is currently maybe putting stress on students, like when you're in fifth grade and they say, well, when you get to the middle school, it's going to be like this, you know? When you get into high school, it's going to be a lot harder, you know? You know, when you get to college, it's going to be a lot harder. And then, you know, I've heard students talk about that stress that they feel from hearing that. So it's kind of unintended, that's not the intention, obviously, of the staff member, but you know, maybe just rethinking how, you know, we talk to our students and what that pressure might be putting on them unintentionally.
Well, absolutely. As we teach our students to identify their emotions and express how they're feeling, we need to be ready to accept that feedback, positive or negative. And so that will certainly be part of that conversation. And I think it's becoming, it's coming more and more in students, the idea of self-advocating and speaking up, whether it's directly to a teacher or seeking out the support of a counselor to help have a facilitated conversation if needed. But certainly, certainly the work, the awareness on the aspect of the teacher is something that would be part of their conversation. Because you're unearthing potentially a lot of emotion within global, within US history, within English, and how do you, what do you do with that and how do you support students with that? And so, you know, a lot of it, I had the opportunity to attend some workshops on the Ruler methodology. And a lot of the conversation was how do you integrate it so it's not, okay, we're going to talk about your emotion, now it's turned, now it's all about global, that criticism's coming, da-da-da-da-da, not one or the other. It's how can we integrate them? And so how can you use the tool of the mood meter to identify the emotion of the character in Romeo? So that it's helping to really internalize those tools, but also, and also giving space within the classroom, within the content area to have those conversations.
I just wanted to add something that Marvin had said in talking to the curriculum committee about Ruler, that my understanding was the first year, the teachers are really focusing on applying the lessons to themselves and shifting culture among the teachers first and then rolling it out to the students. So that if I'm correct-
No, you're absolutely right.
-that the first year isn't going to go into the classroom work with the students yet at all, right? It's really just learning that-
Not directly.
Not directly.
That's correct.
Yeah, and in fact, one of the tools that is taught to the staff that for them to work on and develop is what's called a compact. So it talks about, it's a kind of a social agreement, social contract. And so we, as administrators in that, in that training engagement, that teachers as departments will engage in that kind of conversation about, what do I need in order to feel supported and safe within this environment? And I had the opportunity to pilot that a little bit with some of my special education staff at the elementary school level. And it was really a great opportunity to look at group norms and to identify those priorities in terms of group dynamics.
I was very pleased to hear that. I thought it made a lot of sense-
Yeah.
...as a way to effectively roll out to, you know, make a deeper change emotionally rather than just a curriculum.
So then looking at next year, so professional development is still being developed, however, we may be looking at some of the following topics: mindfulness or relaxation needs, social-emotional learning, mental health awareness, and something that will come up again at the school counseling plan is clinical support with the DPS staff, the people personnel staff. We will certainly continue to engage in a parent academy and I'll let my colleagues take that, because that will likely come out of hot demand. One of the needs that has come up over the years, we looked at student needs and data, was in the area of the development of a risk and suicide assessment protocol, as well as forms to go along with that. All of our clinicians and counselors are versed on risk assessment, however, they all have perhaps a different approach to it and utilize a slightly different model. And so the idea of creating a K through 12 procedure where we have a system and we then are able to pull that information so that we can track the student's mental health needs through schools through the years. That's something that we will be working on starting this summer. Functional behavioral assessment and behavior plan camp with the protocol. I've developed a template, so we piloted some new procedures at the middle school, primarily the middle school and high school. So it's revising some of those pieces and then for primarily our special education staff and DPS staff, rolling those out so that everyone is accountable and everyone has a part in the development of a behavior plan to meet students' needs. And the functional behavior assessment is the data collection that informs the development of a behavior plan. So it's classroom observation data, it's data collection by the teacher themselves about a specific behavior that's impeding their, the student's ability to access their education at that point in time. And then, given the rise of mental health needs, we would like to establish a mental health task force to look at, when we talk about interventions, we think of tier one, two, and three. So we're thinking about the mental health interventions for our students at the tier three level, at their utmost at-risk level, and how are we addressing their needs within the district and how can we program to meet their needs in the future? So that's something else we'd like to do. That would be a group of administrators, DPS staff, and teachers from across the district to look at the need, explore potentially different models to, at some point, hopefully towards the end of next year, bring some ideas to the people.
Before I raised my hand, I was about to. She's good. Two questions. One, could you define tiers of the tier one, two, and three?
Well, we don't really, yes. So in education, so in education, there is thought of this kind of multi-tiered system of support. And so I think it's tier one being our general education instruction that all students receive, tier two being the targeted support that students may need. So maybe that's group counseling, maybe that's some speech, OT or PT that is provided at AIS services. AIS services, welcome to that as well. And then tier three is your most intensive support services. So that may give a referral to the Committee on Special Education. That might be a functional behavior assessment to develop a very specific behavior improvement plan for students. In this case, it's looking at what do we do for a student whose mental health is preventing them from accessing their education.
And then my second question, this may be included in either the development of the risk and suicide assessment or the functional behavior assessment, I'm not sure. But do we have an assessment slash protocol that is followed when students, if teachers or other staff have concerns about a student potentially being a violent, like a potential that may be too fuzzy, but if you follow-
Yes, if a student seems dysregulative in any way, if they're not acting their typical self, they will certainly reach out to their school counselors first and foremost, if they know that their student's working with a psychologist or a social worker, they will reach out to them as well. But certainly, teachers feel very comfortable to refer behavioral or emotional concerns to our counseling team in order for them to assess. And there can always be additional work in that area. There is what's called an emotional first aid training that's offered to school staff. So it's not necessarily the teacher becoming the counselor, but being able to assess and identify need and being able to triage before the student gets to a practitioner.
And do our teachers regularly get that, emotional first aid training?
We haven't, we haven't as of yet. That's one of, so that's one of so many different options that we have as we continue to explore professional development. And that's offered, can be offered, but that's just, I mean, they have to.
Thank you.
That would probably be subsumed under that third section down, development of a risk and suicide assessment and protocol, to be able to identify a student who's off in some significant way and make an assessment as to whether, where on that list of level one, two, and three the student is, you know, does this student require a more intensive intervention or something less, less so? So that's on the drawing board for us to do this kind of year.
And I think it's important to talk about the student, their baseline and if they're not presenting us their typical baseline, because everyone has a different affect and comes to school with different attitudes towards school. And so you may have a student who is reserved and is disengaged and may look like they're socially on the fringe, and that may raise concerns, but that may be either a baseline and that may be their comfort level. So part of being aware of students' mental health needs and social needs is just knowing that there's diversity in how people want to engage socially and recognizing that, because I think that we could very easily start to typecast. And this day, we certainly need to be mindful for our health and safety, but we want to make sure that we're not stereotyping certain aspects of the process. Any other questions about this required pieces? So moving into the next full year at the building level, like we're going to continue with second step in Great Body Shop and the Minus Per configuration. We'll be working with Mr. King to explore expanding one or both of those, but currently we'll do at least what we have in place this year. We'll continue with PDIS. Responsive classroom professional development will take place for teachers, and that's a classroom program that provides students, builds community, and then the elementary school classroom begins with a learning and establishes standards, kind of behavioral standards and community standards, rather. And so that, some of our teachers will be engaging in that. And that's a follow-up from previous initiative that many of our teachers engaged in several years ago for my time here. And so this is trying to catch those newest hires in the area of responsive classroom. And then we're going to explore establishing sensory pathways within our elementary school. And so thinking about the opportunity for students to take notice, mental breaks but also physical breaks, so that they can expend some energy. And more and more, we're seeing students come with attentional needs and need to release some physical energy. And so we don't want to reduce classroom instruction time by making a recommendation to go to a certain room, but perhaps with the, we can create spaces in the hallways, for example, where students are doing wall push-ups, where students are moving through and doing some burrow, some bear crawl. And certainly all of that would be taught to all the students in a very explicit way. A number of our teachers do that currently for students on the individual level, but the idea of expanding that so that, to catch some of those students who may not necessarily be crying out for it, but would benefit from it is certainly something we'll explore. And one thing I don't have on here, but the elementary school and certainly the middle school too, is they really embrace the idea of meeting students' sensory needs, and so which has everything to do with self-regulation and executive functioning within the classroom. So it also has to do with students' social, emotional, and awareness. And insofar that is, they have a lot of flexible seating. We're working really hard to make sure that every classroom, there are students who need, hopefully need it or not, have the access of seating desks, cushions, rockers, and such adaptive seating, as well as sensory tools. In the middle school, Mr. Kedder is working, looking to expand the fearless living program to include seventh grade. Counseling staff will continue to support, partner with their general education colleagues or their classroom colleagues. And we're going to revise the individual counseling session procedures. And what that has to do with is a direct outcome of the K through 12 guidance revisions, where Ms. Fountain does now, in addition to meeting with the seventh grade, she now has to meet with the sixth grade students. And so developing a way to do that, so it provides students the support that they need while not being, not keeping them a class for too long, but also thinking about what can be done before that one-on-one guided session to gather information to inform them. So thinking about how to integrate Naviance into that in preparation for those one-on-one meetings. And then continuing with establishing counseling and social skills groups at the middle school level, and then of course integrating Naviance. In the high school, we'll continue, we'll also integrate Naviance. We will engage in the Ruler training as a staff and a faculty. We will expand our opportunities for guided relaxation techniques and continue to establish counseling groups and meet with various people in our students.
I have a question. This is a difficult topic, it's a big problem to solve. So I do have a question when I look at this. Recently I had, I was speaking with some high school kids that were talking about stress and anxiety, and obviously that's something we know that is an issue. And they, you know, I said, the district is really trying to do a lot to address this, and they were working hard on this, and they asked me, you know, specifically, you know, what are you doing to help me? And I had no answer. So I look at this and I still don't specifically see an answer for the high school kids. The things in here are, things are going to take a little time to kind of filter down. But I just wonder, like, in the next couple of years, like, what are we going to do to help them? Sorry to put you on the spot about that, but that's the question I have.
I think a lot of it has to do with transparency. I think that the integration of Ruler into the classrooms will be, will open up dialogue where I think that there may be times when students don't feel like the door of conversation is open. A lot of the times, as the Director of Special Education, I sit in CSE meetings and I listen to, well, a student was concerned about but didn't want to ask kind of those kinds of questions. And issues that are presented that a conversation or a dialogue would address and having the opportunity to build those relationships and have those moments of connection with the teacher, I think is really important. The idea of providing the Ruler training to help teachers, to give them the tools to engage in these, engage in these conversations is incredibly important. But also making sure that we're utilizing our counseling staff so that there's more access, I think is also important. Raising awareness of, there are these counseling rooms, they are available. And so that's just what I mean by transparency. The mindfulness of the relaxation space, a lot of the conversation pattern will, how do we sell that, what does that look like? And because we want to make sure that when we present it to students, that it's something that they will, they will be willing to engage in and not kind of, to not try to avoid. I think that all of these pieces together build a level of support. I also think it's the, I think that we, in addition to these pieces, when we talk about stress and we talk about anxiety, we need to look at our curriculum. And I've had conversations with Marvin about this offline and wasn't expecting to have this come up. But thinking about how, you know, what that demand looks like, not just academic, not for the academic needs, but the social-emotional needs and what is its impact? So I think that that's something to really think about and to process about, especially as teachers start to internalize this work and this messaging and the understanding of, if a student doesn't feel safe and supported in your class, they're not available to support. That's first and foremost. That's first and foremost. So I don't know if I gave you an answer. There's no, there's no-
Sorry, I put you on the spot, I'm sorry.
There's no easy fix. There are a lot of ways to approach this challenge. I think that there's, I think that we as a, as a, as a society also need to change how we look at anxiety and stress and to look at, I, I did hear from, from families, well, I don't want my child to feel stressed. I don't want him to be like, so can you create a plan, Sabine, to get rid of all that anxiety and stress? Well, no, I can't because it's a living target. Because if you, if that is your internal response to a situation, an unknown situation, then regardless of, it doesn't matter what that situation is, you're going to respond that way. So it's recognizing the emotion and changing how you respond to it. And also recognizing that stress to varying degrees and at varying points in your life or a part of life and to normalize it. And that's also where I think these conversations with faculty as well as counseling will come into place. Because I think a lot of our students feel so alone in this and I, and I don't want to say that, but they feel so exhausted. And it's not until they, they seek, some of our more needy students seek treatment in a hospital setting where they see, oh wait, I am now. And we, I want to, the idea of these, these supports is to lift the veil before, before it gets there, right? So that we recognize that they're a community and we have diversity and some of the needs aren't in the area of mental health and anxiety and we're going to not just silence ourselves, but we're going to have these conversations.
Yeah, I'd also mention, I don't see it on this list, but I know that, that Ed and John Kennitzer have been working with, with a, a committee of members of their teaching staff to try to develop an advisory program which would specifically impact secondary level kids, to give them a context for making connections with some significant individuals, adults in the school. So again, none, none of these things is a light switch, like if we plug this in, everything's going to get better. And many of these things are going to take years to become part of the culture, but you've got to start someplace. And, and I think there's a, there's a pretty reasonable array of services that we're seeing have either already started or will be starting at the elementary level and will build up through our middle school and, and our high school. You know, kids didn't get stressed out overnight or in one year, okay? And they didn't just get stressed out in school either. They're stressed all over, at home, other places. So there, it's, it's a big, and, and, you know, this is not hyperbole. I mean, it's a big, it's a big nut to crack and we're doing what we can to start to, to crack that nut in a way that, that makes sense within, within the resources that are available to us, so.
And to speak to the advisory, I didn't, I purposefully did not include it because I know that there are ongoing conversations-
Yes, there are, yes.
...of that. And so I, I wasn't aware of how, I, I wasn't aware of at what level we're having those conversations and where, I was hoping, I'm very, very, very optimistic about that program. I, I wanted to, I wanted to provide the, give the building level administrators the opportunity to share that as they're willing to have that very specific case.
Well, that's, it's, it's still under development, that's, that's for sure.
What have we done in the way of involving students-
Thank you.
-in brainstorming or in identifying like what they'd like to see in the way of supports?
So a lot of, that's a great question. One, one example is Ms. Fountain's going into the fifth grade classrooms prior to the tour that they receive at the middle school to find out what are, what are some of the, what is some of their anticipatory stress and from there, kind of what are some things that we can do to support them in that transition? So gathering information that way. You know, when Ms. Rodeo was in the classrooms and talks about stress, she talked about what brings, what causes stress for you, what, what are some ways that you, you cope with that? And in the establishment of the groups, the, in the middle school and high school, it's not, it's not counselor-directed. It really is a dialogue. And so it takes, it takes, the establishment of those groups do take longer because it's, it's the conversation of, are you, would you even be open to this? And what does, what does this look like for you? And same thing with that relaxation space, Ms. Rodeo, and talking about it as she has run in students that have come to her or she's aware of that are interested in that and it's a dialogue. So I want to say that we have done a, we haven't done an all-call announcement that you're really for student feedback, but it's been targeted and, and counselors are planning with students' interests and voices in mind, same thing with Mr. Pauli Billows, proof that he runs. So, yeah.
We've also done a fair amount of surveying-
Correct.
And, and I know that that data has played a, a big part in the, the decision-making and development of programs on your chart. So it's not like we haven't heard student voices. We've heard staff voices. Unfortunately, as you're all aware, the parent voices in this have been, have been really not nearly as robust as we had hoped. And that's a shame because they've got to be partners in this. But, you know, we, we can't just put the brakes on because of that. But kids have told us through that survey vehicle, if no other way, but I know there have been other less formal ways, what their issues, concerns are. And that's, I think, been a major impetus in, in putting these programs together.
And to the point, and to that point, the document we're going to be looking at, that's the school guidance plan, actually has the, in the appendix, the school count climate results because that has a direct implication on, on all the work that we're doing.
Would you envision in the mental health task force, students being part of that?
At various points. There will be a level of contact tally, which will be, it goes with the specific student data. So there will be, there will be points in which we would like to consider that.
For, for the ruler program, that the teachers are going to be trained and then they're going to train the teachers. And, and in regards to school culture and internalizing that, understanding of it, I would imagine that for some individuals, this might be new territory for themselves as well. And then they're taking this new approach or new understanding and training people the next year. And I'm just wondering if there's any continuation of working for that individual who all of this might be very new understand, of understanding? And if there's continuation of the training for the teachers who are training the ruler?
Yes, it's not, it's not one year and we're all trained and now we're all, we're all-
We're all done.
It is, it is ongoing training to various degrees. And so depending on how the faculty responds, we'll, we'll adjust what we need to do to support that.
And, I'm sorry. And, and so, and for the teachers who are taking it first on board, is there any type of, I don't know, of, you know, who are, who are they going to turn to if they run up against a roadblock that they're not quite understanding? I mean, are you going to be a part of that or is it-
Well, Dr. Vakomport will be at the, and there's a network of support through this initiative, through the, this ruler initiative group in the northwest district. So they'll be connected to, to other people who are in the same boat, experiencing the same, sharing the same information in their district or in their, in their school. And so they'll have the opportunity to collaborate and come back together and problem-solve some of those, some of those challenges, but of course, the district will be involved.
Yeah, this is not a new program. I mean, it's got a pretty, pretty robust track record. So part of the, the program is to develop a network of, of peer support there. So there will be other people who are ta, I think there's like thirty schools involved in this training in the, in the catchment area of, of the Putnam Northwest District Bosse. So there are also schools who have done this already and are in the area. So there's a network of, there's a support network built into this program. And it's, it's fairly deep because it's, this isn't the first year of this program. It's first year for us.
Any other questions about? So then, the school counseling plan, this is a revision of the 2010 plan that was presented and approved.
This is the document right before the one we've been looking at.
And so really we use, we use that previous document as a guide by me, I mean, myself and the PPS staff. And for those of you who don't have a PPS staff, who puts schools at college, schools or, or, and school guidance council. And so, so like I, I said in my introduction, I have, have the opportunity to work closely with that team. So helping guide this, this document and advising this document made, did make the most sense. Changes from the twenty, from the originally approved 2010 document really speaks to the, the further articulation of the, the school guidance program. So looking at, looking at building out the mission and vision, looking at building out the professional development. Do you want me to go through a piece, like, I, I was going to speak about it in general, if that's okay?
I think that's fine.
Revising, revising the, even the document, those staff numbers was something that we engaged in. And also establishing what the advisory council will be. So in addition to the PPS team meeting on a regular basis to do all the work that's included in this document and redo it, we would be, we will be meeting and presenting to the advisory council, which is a, a register of stakeholders to provide recommendations and suggestions for this plan and for the work that would be done by the PPS staff. And what we did here in Rydick is we, we were utilizing the support of the CDEP and we're, it's becoming, CDEP will act as our advisory council. So no less than twice a year, we'll be presenting to the, to the CDEP committee and dialogue about the action plan, the, the action plan for this year and then also the outcomes and what has happened with the course of the year. And so-
Emily, I'm sorry, before you move on about that advisory council, so it's pretty explicit in your plan that there'll be teachers, administrators, the PPS and a board member. Is this, in, is this group different from CDEP or is it, is CDEP, they're just using CDEP?
I'm a PPS.
Gotcha.
Because we're a small district, I didn't want to reinvent the wheel and so-
And CDEP has all the stakeholders that are called out in this plan.
And she didn't have a school counselor. And so Ms. Fountain is serving on the school, as a school counselor, but certainly the likes to see one or more of her colleagues join because the school counselor role is a little bit different from that of the high school and kind of stuff. And so that may be, we're going to talk about that at future PPS meetings, that may be a rotating seat for good accounting. And it's something, it's permissible by CDEP. And then just thinking about the professional development. And also, then we, we also incorporate the structure of the support group that we have as a PPS team, which is our, our faculty meetings and, and that's a bit very small, but we meet eight to ten times a year. We make a schedule in September and we spend at least an hour, often two hours to, to meet to learn about resources in the community, invite as people will speak. I'm looking to bring some clinical support in for next year in that, in that venue. Talk about trends, talk about being program developed. This year, a lot of that time has been spent on, will be part of the document in the PPS. But that will, that will be ongoing. And then, so the, the 2010 document had twelve program goals. It had four goals per, per school and it, it, they were wide-reaching goals and very similar to the goal we have here. What we did, we, we felt that we made the most sense because we want to look at the case of help continuum. We decided to collapse those into four district-wide goals so there was more coherence throughout the, throughout the district and, and their work. They weren't silent. And so we developed, we collapsed those twelve goals into the four goals that you'll see on page, on page thirteen of the document. And then after that, we list out and we have the opportunity to review and revise, are the grade-level planned objectives for those goals? More work does need to be done in what we've discussed next year on the outcomes and the deliverables and the data piece, data in the world of school counseling, if you're not talking about attendance, you know, we have that, we have somewhere data, attendance, graduation rates, grades, New York State score, UCLA math scores, discipline records, but some of them were, there's some soccer data that we're looking to really zoom in on and find ways to, to continue to collect, to, to demonstrate, one, the need of the students and two, how the PPS staff is really, will be utilized in the district. So that's some, those are some refinements there. After the work about the goals and the objectives, we move into the-
Emily, sorry.
We move into the activities and these, this is the school counseling, very long, it must be twenty-four, very long list of, not the fourth.
Twenty-one, twenty-two, yeah.
Emily, before you get there, can I ask a question?
Sure.
On the goals. On, so I don't know what page it is here, so it's under goal one. It's six through twelve, under academics, I don't, I don't know what page it is for you to.
Bottom right wing.
Oh, I don't know, but I'm, so it's page fifteen, actually. I'm just wondering if you could talk a little bit about, so there's the first line, demonstrate an understanding of their current academic standing for sixth through eighth graders and then from nine through twelve, demonstrate an understanding of their present academic status. I'm asking about this question because several years ago, a change was made in the high school not to put class ranking on, to not let kids know what their class ranking was and it won't be part of their transcript or discussed. And then at the time, there was mixed reviews on why we were doing that. And talking about kids weighing in, there was just an article in the kid, in the high school newspaper from students talking about class ranking and from ninth grade on, the pressure that those kids that are at the, you know, they're maybe number one or two, the pressure that they feel gone for. So I'm just wondering if maybe you could talk a little bit about what, what this would mean talking about the standing or if that conversation has happened a little bit? So I was kind of surprised when I read the paper that, you know, kids in ninth, tenth, and first grade are already like feeling pressure that they're the potential valedictorian and the pressure that that feels and competition between kids. And so when I read that, I was like, I'm just wondering if that, what, what that exactly means about telling them about their status or academic status and standing.
Status, you know, has that, has that conversation and really has to do with how they're, how they are performing academically. And in terms of how they perform in the past, what their, what their personal goals are for performance and are they meeting those goals? I have a student who will say, well, I just want to get an A. Or if that's, that's your goal, we'd like you to be four or higher, but if that's your goal, okay. How are you doing with that goal? If your goal is, if your personal goal is to achieve honor roll or to receive olives, then we want to talk about that. And so status, and thank you for pointing that out, is, is, does kind of take something, an external ranking. It has, it has less to do with that and more to do with kind of the student's place and their, their academic, academic functioning within that classroom as evidenced by how they're feeling, their, their ability, external indicators, grades. So then the plan had on page twenty-two, this is the activities and we did, had the opportunity to revise these this year, of course. And we aligned up to the goals and have the opportunity to share this with the school administrators to receive their feedback. We included, so this process involved identifying those activities that we no longer engage in as a district from since 2010, things that we need to improve upon and, and new activities that we need to improve. So, so that you'll see here, listed here. And then from there, we move into what we would like to do as a PPS team for the nineteen, twenty, for the year. So there's some overlap with the, what you saw in the previous document in terms of the social, emotional wellness goal, for school. So we talked about, again, the mental health task force that really is, comes out of that, that school climate survey as, where students have a decreased sense of social, emotional security, but also as evidenced by the needs, the mental health needs, how the need for roles and the points of contact we're having with, with families and providers. how the need for roles and, and the points of contact we're having with, with families and, um, providers in the, in the community. And we see that, we see the support, the use of the, the creation of the risk assessment really falling under that, uh, category. And then the engaging and ongoing professional development, peer supervision, um, clinical support. And for the high school counselors, um, the conversation about really making sure that they're getting out and visiting colleges, um, was something that was, uh, we, that they would like to focus on. And so, looking at, um, looking at where, why, and why, um, will be the conversation for, um, for this year and thinking about what we can do locally and then creating, um, essentially will be a plan. So we're making sure that we're, um, focusing through colleges that are most appropriate for our, for our counselors. Um, and then, in, um, in grades, kindergarten through five, when we're looking at the activity, um, documentation, what we claim was that our peer mediation goals need to be enhanced, um, at, at that, at that kindergarten through five level. And so, looking at the current peer, how current peer mediators are being utilized and consider, um, peer meter for the program. And then how we can, um, really build, build those bridges between second step and, which is the, the SEL for the, and peer mediation. Um, we're piloting the elementary counseling program in kindergarten through five. So, each of our school counselors will have the opportunities of the elementary school and, um, engage and work with, uh, two grade levels. So for example, Ms. Fountain will work with the first grade, uh, kindergarten and fifth grade. And they'll go in, uh, between two and four times a year to work with the, with the teachers, um, in those grade levels. This summer, the school counselors are, I'm sorry, I haven't even addressed the gentleman in the room. I'm sorry for the questions.
We're very chatty.
So, uh, so this summer, the school counselors will be developing short, uh, career units, um, that address the, the regulation, the changes in the, right, uh, trans regulation. Um, and they'll build up the fashion to be able to co, um, co-teach that. And, uh, the kind of, all of the elementary school teachers have become aware of that, that it was a specific grade level team. And I already have, um, interest, um, from elementary school teachers about that, that partnership. So I think I'm looking forward to it. And all of that conversation happened in collaboration with Dr. Devon Portman, Mr. Kevinsir, and Mr. Pam O'Callaghan. Um, and again, we spoke with the sensory pathways. Um, in grades six through eight, this is a little bit redundant, um, I'm talking about both those, the plan as well as the, the goal items. But the individual counseling session, the establishing, establishing the counseling groups, um, and running goals. And then again, in nine through, um, nine through twelve, the integration of NABEons will take us a lot of, uh, counseling time as well as creating that space and opportunities for structure management. Um, you see, I, I name it something different in every document. One day, something's on a stick in terms of what we're gonna call that. Um, and, uh, but, and then establishing, um, because they need to establish counselor groups. So we're gonna look at, uh, student participation in those groups. I think that will be an important indicator in terms of, uh, are we meeting student need? And if not, why not? What are some of those obstacles? Um, now, we have, uh, student surveys, uh, attendance and, um, and the attendance really speaks to the attendance of our students who, who's much unhealthy, are most impacted by their, um, are, are most impacted by their, their ability for school, regular basis and, and discipline.
So I have two questions for you. Um, when are we administering the next climate survey?
I had a feeling someone was going to ask a very important question. So, so that's a conversation we'll be having, uh, with, um, our administrative council, I believe in the coming, as we look at professional development for next year. Um, because that is, we'll need to, part of this plan is continuous, uh, collection of data, um, to determine, uh, the appropriateness and the effectiveness of the program. And so, that is an important piece of data that captures so many aspects of our, of our school. Um, so we'll be talking about that in coming administrative council meetings. Um, and, um, and then we'll also be looking at alternatively, what are some of those other data points we can gather, um, that may be more important, but would, uh, uh, speak more directly, uh, more directly to the program. So thinking, working with PPS about those pieces, um, thinking about the transition to, to strict grades. So we now, we, we collect the data of what's bringing, what's causing some anxiety, causing some stress. And we're going to look forward to developing opportunities to gather information from the transition to sixth grade about, you know, what some of those supports have, were, that were placed, that were effective, what still needs to be done.
And then my other question is, um, the parental engagement goal that you've got. And I know that's the hardest thing, you know, especially at the secondary level. I think elementary parents are pretty engaged, all in all. Um, so have you talked about, other than open house and parent-teacher conferences and the stuff that's sort of standard, which people do or don't pay attention to? Do you have any thoughts about how you're going to actively engage parents? We've talked about some things in communications, um, some ways that we can actually get parent voice involved in conversation about their kids and things that are happening for their kids in their homes. Have, have you had other conversations like that in-
Yes.
-the development of this plan?
Yes, um, we have. And, um, and some of the conversation, I think, was, um, we had some conversation, I think, as a, as a, as a result of a, maybe a conversation we had with already gathered and prepared. Um, and so, um, most recently, I've had, I've had that conversation with our, um, middle school and high school counseling team, looking at creating a, creating a, a parent, um, survey that we can utilize. Um, and they were all thrilled and excited about that opportunity. Um, one of the, one of the challenges that presents, that is presented as the middle school and high school, they call them full teachers. So where is that housed? Um, so, um, the idea of if they're really attached to NABEons, um, I believe, I believe we know. Um, so let's think more creatively. And so, it will not just be the creation, but also how do we keep it, and some of the information. Um, the other piece that has, uh, that we discussed at PPS, as well as has extended into health wellness, a little bit of the dark on anxiety, is how does happen to those families who may not always come up to much, um, very, um, very, a very important conversation? And how do we, and why is that? What, what are some barriers? Um, and so, uh, certainly, there's no cost. Um, certainly, it's fairly accessible. But, but the idea of thinking about what we can do online has come up, as well as, um, being more intentional about who we, who we are inviting. Um, so, for example, like we have focused groups for students, thinking about bringing in focused, focused groups of parents to talk about specific needs, um, that we are aware of, that children may have. Um, and so that there's, if children, give them that safe space that, um, that their, their children are, are also asking for. Um, and that's been part of the conversation, um, that we've had at PPS.
Thank you.
I have a quick question. So these, these climate results, the first year we have this data?
No, this is the second year.
The second year. Were there, were there any trends you noticed year over year? Or is there anything that kind of surprised you, either positively or negatively, with the results?
Well, quite honestly, the, the, the interesting thing, um, about this data is really the trend of the three, three buildings, three, um, schools over this year. And in all three, in all three schools, it really was, um, the, um, social media being an area of concern, but also the, um, uh, the, um, my, the student wellness, uh, uh, let me go, uh, sense of the, sense of social emotional security, as well as physical security. And so, I, that really speaks to a lot of what we're, what we're looking at in terms of making explicit, you know, that we, we are here not with, for, to see academics, but their wellness and health wellness.
You then turn focused priorities in those areas.
Yes.
And jump down there.
Yes, you can welcome. And so, in addition to the work that the PPS staff did in looking at the activities that they've been engaging in over the course of the, the years and determining which ones need, are no longer existent, are no longer effective, and what's going to be revised. And the school, the schools also did engage in that conversation after the school climate survey. Um, and that was a, a robust conversation where they listed all of the different initiatives that they have and kind of bring them and, and talked about what could, how they can enhance them and how they want to, to focus their, their endings. And so, that's where the response of that conversation came out of and the advisory, um, conversation came out of that. So, so a lot of the work that is being presented tonight is really coming out from student need and teacher reflectives on that need.
All right, just in terms of process, this guidance plan is required by commissioner's regulation to be approved by the Board of Education. Is that correct?
And it's, yes. And by commissioner's regulations, and these are revised annually. And I come to you every June to review it and to talk about the revisions to your additional data. So, which is why the, the, um, the school climate survey is something that I'm equally, um, interested in exploring because that is an important data point, um, especially in the area that can be so gray and so murky in terms of data. As, as it relates to students' social emotional needs. Yes.
So I'm gonna bring it back to, to my question.
I'm sorry.
So, no, that's, it's fine. So at some point, prior to the start of school in September, the board has to vote to approve this plan. Is that correct? Okay. And what's the deadline date?
It needs to be, it needs to be uploaded before the birthday of school.
Okay. So there, there would be no issue with having the board vote to approve this at our next meeting, for example?
Or you can put it out.
Well, they could, and, and I'd be fine with that. But, uh, are you anticipating any significant changes to this?
No changes.
Okay. Okay. So we'll put it on the next agenda for approval.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Emily, thank you so much. This is really, it's a lot of work and I really appreciate you diving in.
I think the most significant thing that, in my opinion, that Emily has accomplished, not only with this, but just generally speaking, since she's been here, is pulling the PPS team from across all three of our schools together to undertake this work. Uh, and really establishing that group. And, you know, you mentioned before, they, they, you know, you guys meet eight or nine or ten times a year. And that's roughly once a month. And that's, that's great. And that's really what you have to do to stay on top of something that's, that is this massive. And I mean, this is a huge and important plan. So thank you for doing that.
Absolutely. I think that they've appreciated having that opportunity.
Yeah, it's great.
And so, it's been, it's been great.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thanks, Emily.
Okay. We are moving on to Mr. Erstark, Health and Wellness.
Good evening. How do we do?
Hey.
All right, so I'm going to, I'm, I don't really, man, I don't know me. I'm David Erstark, Health and Wellness Committee here, the, uh, middle school phys ed teacher, high school, uh, health teacher, and I coach numerous sports here. So, um, I handed you a, some information.
It's in your packets.
In your packet. I'm gonna review it real quick and then just take a question. Um, congrats, all the diaries I've read earlier, the ones that couldn't be here as well. So, um, during the fair, first year or so, it's probably about, say, six, seven years, eight, seven years I've been on that, six, seven years I've been, uh, ahead of this. Um, kind of was more of a nutrition committee as I walked into and stuff. And it was, it was fine, it was good. Um, but I think we kind of quickly realized we wanted to focus on so much more. And very frankly, according to the state and, and some regs, we, we had to, uh, the Health and Wellness Committee. Uh, transition was helped by the establishment of what we call here the, uh, parent cabinets. To date, we've had, um, five. Um, we've had probably attended over seven hundred and fifty people, anywhere from fifty people in the first one, um, because of us getting started and saying, you know what, we'll just out and see how it goes. Unfortunately, it was on the morning at eight thirty, nine o'clock in the morning on a-
Saturday.
Saturday morning of center class.
Center class.
But I thought it was raining and people didn't wanna be out there. So we actually had about fifty people show up today. And that's, that's the first one here. It was kind of a combination of, um, we focused on drugs and alcohol, where we brought in a lawyer and then the law side of it, and an officer, and a, um, former and current still, uh, parent of numerous kids in the district who had a child and, uh, who was suffering from addiction and started in high school and had been in rehab. That was one panel. And then we had, um, we did have nu, uh, nutritionists come in, talk about the food. We're kind of moving towards, uh, I think we've done a really good job, the district of, um, better food in our school and stuff. Um, and the last one was on, um, uh, nutrition and then the school lunch program. So we had three different sessions. Uh, people came to each session. They, if eight thirty was too early, they showed up for their second session, they kind of signed up. So, the next one was, um, we brought in Dr. Chatteramatri from, um, New Pulse. And that was on sleep patterns and the importance of sleep and everything to adolescents, which was really, really interesting. Um, not too well attended. I think that was because by the time her schedule opened up, it was, it was May. People were doing baseball and Little League and everything. It was really kind of a, that was really interesting. So that may be something we look at, uh, in the future. Then we had Bonnie St. John come in and spoke on resiliency, which Emily met, mentioned earlier, which I think is a, a big kind of component of the, the stress and anxiety. And, um, a member now that's not here had a big play in that. And as a committee, um, she came here about ten percent of what she usually charges people around the country, which is a big, big fee. Um, and she stole the book and if you attended that, it was a phenomenal actual, um, a night with her. That was attended by, well, probably about a hundred fifty, two hundred people. Um, then we had our screenagers. And that screenagers might actually come before Bonnie. Um, screenagers was attended by about three hundred people. Um, I think because of, A, that was the, the, the time of the year. It was February, March, something to do on a, on a cold night. Uh, the, we've learned which days and nights are better than others. The, I think it was that, the night of the week it was and the time. Um, and I'll speak to that a little bit later because the Rhymic Science Foundation has reached out again in terms of that. And then we just did one with Bonnie's response to stress and anxiety, because it's an ongoing and a huge issue that's going on, which we always talk about big time in the health classroom, which, any questions on that, we'll find. In addition to that, we worked really, really hard on the, uh, health and wellness policy, which was completed, I think, at the end of last year and then sent to the board. It's also nice to know that, I, I would say, without mentioning another district that's, uh, south of here, it's really, we kind of throw ideas back and forth between the two of us. I think the two districts are really ahead of a lot of districts in the area on the Health and Wellness Committee. Uh, we, we are getting, I know Mr. Fallon and I talked about how other districts are asking what we're doing and kind of ideas to get theirs going and stuff, which I think is a, is a, is a nice thing to hear. Uh, the committee has grown this year. Um, you know, members come on and come off, but we've added the, uh, the PPS, which we mentioned earlier, Meg Royer, Carmella Fountain, Emily Davidson. Um, and I think, uh, the committee itself is a really, really good balance between so many branches in the district, where you have schools, social worker, and the, um, director of special education, and the guidance council, and the director of curriculum instruction, and numerous principals, and, um, assistant superintendent, uh, Tom Reno could be here tonight, educator on there. Um, it's a really, really-
Larry Anthony's on your committee too, isn't he?
Larry Anthony, director of food services. And so, it's like, such a really good group of a lot of avenues. And that leads to some of the stuff for the future now. We've had parents on there, we had a student on there, um, last year. Is, first of all, the first bullet point here, Rhymic Science Foundation has reached out to us, um, to do, there's the screenagers too. Um, we haven't looked at it yet. Obviously, we're gonna, that, that, that first to see, obviously, if it's appropriate or not, as we always do. Um, but assuming it goes along with screenagers one, I think that's a, a really good idea because I think that's directly tied into the stress and anxiety. Uh, that goes on. The kids have talked about that in classroom. Um, I asked them, there's positive negatives to every invention. What are the positive negatives to Facebook? And they were usually more negative than positive. I looked at them and said, then why do you want it? Do you have to be on it? So the kids are actually like, no, we don't have to be. And like, those decisions sometimes you gotta kind of make. So, I think it's a really, um, it kind of goes into what Emily was talking about and we've been looking at. Along also with our food service coordinator in the district, I know spreading the word about in the next couple of years, is all new kitchens coming in to play with the, the buildings and stuff. We're trying to talk about that now. What's it gonna do for the kids, for the faculty, for the staff, for the students? What's that gonna look like? What can we do with that? Is, you know, start talking about that kind of stuff now as a Health and Wellness Committee. We're looking to add both students and parents to our committee. And the best way to do so, and that's kind of ideas and, feel free to, to, to think about it after a week tonight, email me with ideas and stuff. But regarding students, ideas kind of talking about would be, obviously, we want each grade represented. Do we do that with, you know, we get a lay of the land perspective from the new arrivals, the people departed and the two years in between? Do we have all four, like a member of each for each grade, um, come to each meeting? Do we have a freshman come to the first couple of meetings and a sophomore, junior, senior? Do we have a freshman, sophomore, junior, senior come to, or more than one, come to each meeting? Uh, I don't know if, then the other question is, would you get those same students every time they come for ten meetings with all the stuff that's going on in school, which she talked about? Um, so do we rotate that a little bit with two or three meetings? So that's kind of where, kind of conversations were happening in terms- So, that's kind of where, kind of conversations were happening in terms of, and Ed and John, you know, Ed's great with that, I go to him, he's got a list of students that have kind of given their names to what kind of committees they may want to be on, parents as well, best way to get parents on the, on the, on the committee, on the website, application, I mean, we're throwing ideas around and kind of get ideas to get that out there. I do think, though, it might be difficult if students come every 10 or 11, you know, we meet 10 times each, each month or any year, and then July is just, everybody's out of here, so we meet in August, everyone knows we're gonna be back, myself, coaching, all the administrators are back, so we usually meet the last couple weeks in August, and then another meeting right again in, in September, so, that's usually the way that works.
And you meet during the day, correct?
We meet during the day, exactly, we meet during the day right now, and that kind of with my schedule changing, we kind of look at the best time to meet, where I can kind of get, we meet for an hour, two hours, 15, and it's both a little over an hour and a half, but at least an hour, hour and 15 minutes is kind of where, and, you know, I kind of work with some of them, you know, is there a way where maybe it's a study hall in a prep period where I don't, offense, I really don't want a lot of people to come in and cover health, I like to be there in the classroom myself, but again, if I know, obviously, I know ahead of time the dates, something that they could do in class, but the study hall and prep period usually work out pretty well, and then again, with the full loads for the students, that's, you know, it's tough, but that's why we're going back and forth, so any ideas with the, the last one I talked about, that would be great. To piggyback what she talked about, about parents getting to certain events that they want to see parents at, you know, we, we talked about Skyping and webinars, and I think somewhere on that social, not social media, but on the, using the internet and stuff would be a pretty good idea, so it's kind of where we're overlapping a little bit. So, any questions that, it's kind of where we've been, where we're at, where we want to go, you know, we look at Screenagers Two, and it's really good, I think we would do that, and I've talked to Superintendent Fallow about this before, we're not against even doing, like, if somebody presented, hey, we already have this going, that can make it even easier, and maybe have two parent academies in the same year, so I'm not really against that, sometimes with scheduling, with our scheduling, and the speaker scheduling too, when they can be here and stuff sometimes, and so, everything else, district, district's great, so, everything else we have going on in the district, you know, finding the right time to do it as well, so. Any questions at this time? That's all I have. 225 years for our diaries, 225 texts?
Pretty crazy, right? So, on your parent academies, assuming Screenagers works, that's great, what other topics for parent academies have you explored?
So, we just had one, the stress and anxiety, and I know that Emily and some other people have gone out to, they went to a conference with those kind of processes, they had a phenomenal speaker come in, and so, we've talked to her, we've actually had a conference call with her, that could be something where it could lend itself to not only having her come here, but possibly with Superintendent's Conference Day, because there's a lot to work out, I saw that's in the early stages, that we can talk about in our office, right now is the best time. I'm kidding, all that? And then, really, I think that's where the students and the parents can kind of help with ideas and stuff moving forward, but anything with stress, anxiety, social media, big epidemics going on now with, everything with opioid, we haven't, we haven't done, again, I think you only hammer home so much of a point on every, I mean, again, this is an important topic, but do we want to hear it from every single point of the district? You know, she's got some of the phenomenal programs going on, Emily just talked about it, and here's Screenagers, there's another stress and anxiety depression, and to some point, it gets like, let's try and get rid of this thing, but yet we're, that's why we're trying to come up with some different topics, so we've done the last couple, Resiliency, and she talked about stress and anxiety, and we just had someone come in and talk about the body's response, and kind of give some ideas on what people can do, so that's kind of why I think we want to, then, Screenagers is gonna touch on that too, but just in a different, in a different way, and then, what we haven't gotten away from a little bit, I honestly would like to really set up a really good night again on, with, with sleep and everything, again, tie it to your house, that's anxiety, would, you know, affect your sleep then, but also the benefits of sleep then, and also ties in to Screenagers, and your phone shouldn't be next to you when you go to sleep, you know, there's a lot, so it is all, it's intertwined, but that's kind of where we're going with, and again, at the meetings, we're always talking about, and it's just, with that group of people in the room, there's always something else coming up, hey, let's look into this, what kind of speakers, and you start grooming stuff, and you start finding people, and, because, you know, this happened with Chancellor, this happened at the middle school or the high school, Marvin had this, or Tom's talking to Mr. Fallow and Ford, and, you know, what do I see in the classroom, and we have the PPS stack there, so it's really, you know, it's, just say we have ideas for the next three or four years, I'll say no, but I'll also say I'm not worried about it. If that, if that, if that kind of makes sense?
Lots of ideas.
Yeah, there's a lot, there's a lot in the world that we can bring people to talk about, so, and again, you know, we, you know, we're all here to help everybody, so, email, you know, hey, don't fret about this, you know, so, anything else?
I really have a question, I think the committee is doing some great work, a lot of challenges with your schedules and everything, so, I, I think, I think you did it with Screenagers, recording it and having it available for parents?
We did it with the stresses, the most recent one.
I mean, I would say to keep doing that, because people can't, you know, that's another way, I mean, any way that you can get parents to, to view these things, whether it's Skype or anything, I think that's a good option, I think having kids on is important, and-
I do too.
I don't know the best way to do it, maybe, you know, more than one student from a grade, and they can kind of work together, so like, one of them can go one meeting, and one the next, but then they're always in communication, maybe that's a way.
Didn't you, didn't one of these have a, a panel of students?
We, I don't know about-
Am I recalling that correctly?
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, for the, um-
Yeah, but as far as attending meetings, yeah.
For the resiliency, we had students up there.
Oh, yeah, well, attending meetings, that, that's a whole challenge.
Yeah, two, yeah, two students up there, but just, what you just said there, you said was, maybe think that having four students, you just said at a meeting with the sophomore, I also know how much freshman, sophomore may want to talk in front of the junior seat, and they have different ideas about high school, and so, I almost then would think that we want representative for a couple of meetings at a time, and then maybe the ending meeting, we can get represented by all grades, something like that, because I don't know, you know, we've been there professionally, but there's, everybody has a voice, everybody needs a voice sometimes, but again, usually people that are signing up for these usually want a voice, so it's like, I don't know if that'd be an issue, but, so, to think about early on, maybe, you know, you bring somebody in for a meeting here too, and then they all come together in the last couple, so, something, that's an issue.
The other thing I just want to mention is that the idea about recording this stuff and uploading it to our website's a great idea, not every speaker will allow you to record them, the one we had for that topic-
I would not.
I know, I know, that's why I'm mentioning it, the one we had to talk about stress and the body's reaction to it, he was all over, yep, and absolutely no problem, so, you know, some, you, you couldn't record Screenagers, you'd be violating copyright law to, to do that, so, depending on who you bring in-
We always ask what we can do.
Yeah.
Maybe allowing them to Skype, that would be a way, that people want to sit home and not be there, I, I don't know.
No, and those are good ideas, and I'm sure these guys will, will, you know, pursue that with, with the various speakers.
I'm at a meeting with a lawsuit.
Correct.
Yeah, let's avoid, let's avoid that.
That'd be great.
Good idea.
It's like, whatever you want, you can, so.
So, I know there have been other speakers that touched on issues like suicide, and bullying, and various other topics, were those connected to the Health and Wellness Committee as well, or did those come from a different?
No, that's coming-
They were building, no, no, go ahead.
No, I, I think they're coming from the building.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, if nobody was doing them, the school could take them over.
We would, but we're also going to talk in the building, going, so what speakers you have coming in, and it's like, oh-
Yeah, they try to coordinate.
Let's go with Screenagers, and not, after we just had another, we actually made that decision where we just were, so let's bring Bonnie and try to get her and Resiliency, when we just had a speaker, the middle school and the high school, and just talk about depression, suicide, and bullying, and then we're gonna, let's push that to next year, and not just have that again, because it's again, and it's also thinking then, so, if, because some, some of the speakers come back a month for the parents, so if the parents just went to that a month ago, a month and a half ago, how many parents are really going to come out with almost not the same thing, but they may look at it as that, I just heard that a month, you know, so we try to do that as well, so.
Well, and that's great, because we went from not doing any of this stuff to, to doing at least one pretty marquee presentation per year, if you did more, that'd be great, but I know scheduling could be an issue too, so, I mean, kudos to the committee to, to go down that road, and that they've been very good programs, each one.
So, thank, we try to coach all that.
That's not allowed.
There's a, there's a need there too, so.
I just had another thought, sorry, a lot of these that are geared towards parents, the only thing I would say is, parents are looking for real solutions, you know, like just remind them, when you talk about the phone, and they shouldn't have the phone in the room, they don't know how to pry it away from them, they're looking for some real solutions to help them.
And that's what the last person was talking about.
Yeah, he was, he did that.
He kind of said, you've got to be prepared to go through, and pardon me, so you've got to be prepared to go through a little bit of hell to get to where you want to be, you're gonna have to go through those arguments, and some people are, I think, willing more than others, some people are, maybe not, but that's, I mean, that's, you're gonna have to go through a little bit to, you know-
But on any of those topics, I think, it's always keeping that, like, strategy, like, how to do what you're telling me I should be doing.
That's what, if you want people to, what, where are they taking away from, so.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dave.
Awesome, thanks.
Good job. Thank you.
Okay. We're gonna move on to committee reports.
Yeah.
Start with finance.
Finance is-
Thanks, Dave.
Thank you.
May. So, we start, we started talking about the bond anticipation note for the capital project. June 12th, we're putting to get out, to bid our third borrowing for 7.56 million, that's for work that's already been completed and worked through June, and we're doing this by completing the official statement document, this document, which is an industry standard, is used by the buyer, ensuring that we can pay back the loan, reflecting information not only regarding our district, but also the community as well, such as how much debt's being carried by the, by our community. The next thing we talked about was the Envision update, everyone is doing very well with the training, and recognizes that the new software will streamline the process and ultimately make the process easier, the last bit of training that took place focused on requisitions and transfers, which the business administration and the principal staff picked up with these, the July payroll is very close to completion, and the next step is getting the online catalogs integrated into our system, which is currently underway. We discussed cafeteria financial update, April is reflecting a positive balance of 33,000, but be aware that the last two months will reflect a drop due to lower revenues, fewer lunches purchased due to field trips and special events, and also the cost for end of year cleanup and food transfer. Outstanding balance of cafeteria meals remains an issue, and we discussed policy number 8530, which prohibits meal shaming, but does stipulate that once a negligent balance of 3250, which is 10 meals, is reached, there is a targeted phone call to remind the families of their past due bill, if the balance reaches a past due amount of $50, Larry Anthony, the food service director, reaches out with a phone call, if still no payment is received, the matter is turned over to the principal, who will work with the school social worker, reaching out to the family and trying to understand the circumstances, should the balance remain unpaid and reach a total of 350, which is 109 lunches, the district has the option of taking the matter to small claims court, no collection agencies are allowed, this is something that the business administration does not want to pursue, and is looking for ways to avoid families getting so far in arrears, this has been an ongoing problem, and the business administration has utilized data provided by the state in order to reach out to families that may not know that they qualify for free lunch, or free reduced lunches, the district also provides every family the forms necessary to apply this summer, Tom is putting together a very clear step-by-step letter, walking families through the process of applying. And then we talked about teacher retirement reserve, there's an option for, in the future, as our fund balance continues to grow, to place a reserve money to use for retirement expenses, there's documents discussing that in your packet, and then changes to the STAR program, the state has changes to the STAR program that instead of receiving the discount from the tax bill, the taxpayer pays the full amount of the tax bill, and then receives a reimbursement check, escrow bank accounts will collect the current year tax due plus the next year, so this may impact tax, impact, impact taxpayers in our district negatively, and the ESSA, a preliminary draft document providing some guidance, has been distributed, and that's in your packet as well, our next meeting is to be determined.
Questions?
I'm sorry, and I know Tom's not here, we might have to ask him at the next meeting, I, is, is Tom recommending that we create the teacher retirement reserve?
He is, he is, I don't want to speak for him.
If you don't know, we can, we can wait till he's back.
Wait for him to get here.
I think it's a case of, what do we have to put in there?
Right, I don't know if there's a minimum we have to put in, I don't, you know, I don't know, it sounds like a good idea, I don't know what else.
It just came, I mean, it just came out, because the legislation is very recent, so, let's just bring it up in our next meeting, and ask Tom to school us on that.
And then, on the STAR, I, I mean, I read through it, and I read through it, I don't understand why they're changing it.
Talk to the state.
I, like, I don't even understand, like, what their rationale is, it doesn't seem to make any sense to do it that way.
It's a bookkeeping thing for them.
Yes, I guess, like, I, I read it several times, I said, it really just, it makes no sense, but I guess that is what the state does, things that don't make sense.
Sometimes.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay. We'll move on to curriculum, those are mine, we spent the entire meeting going through this summer curriculum work, and just sort of remind everybody and to illustrate what we do, typically, there are summer study grants, and there are summer curriculum projects, summer study grants are generally for personal education during the summer, summer curriculum projects are projects that are done that directly affect the classroom, starting in the fall.
Yeah, one, and the latter is developing curriculum, the former is more like taking a course on a topic related to what you, what you do.
Yes, yes, that's right, so, we talked a lot about the application project, or process for curriculum projects, and Marvin sort of looks at these things through the lens of state requirements, the requirements of the CEDUP plan, and the board goals that we set, and sort of how these curriculum projects fit into those buckets, Joe and Marvin then review them all, and do a little horse trading about hours to take, and that kind of thing, the money that Marvin has to fund these projects come from a variety of different sources, Title I grants, 611 grants, Title II grants, and, and the taxpayers part of the budget, some of the highlights, in Chancellor, they're doing a lot of continuation of the work that they were doing this year for Big Ideas Math, and the writing curriculum that they've been, they've been beefing up, so they're gonna work a lot on that, they're also expanding the idea of the Science Live Labs for the second and fourth grades, BMS is, is furthering the idea of flipped classrooms, using technology for the classrooms, there are new apps that are coming out that will help support the learning of the math concepts, so they're, they're working on some of those things, we heard a lot about the Ruler Program, which will happen over the summer, the initial training, Naviance Training, and there's Texas Instruments Training, which, I guess, the new calculators that the high schoolers need have coding sort of embedded in some of the work that they will have to do in geometry, and calculus, and algebra, too, so, the teachers are gonna learn how to integrate the calculator. Jaclyn raised a concern about sort of the level of technology and access to online work, and how that may or may not be affecting families who don't have good connection, or don't have a lot of technology, so, we're going to, we've talked about asking teachers to sort of check in with their kids, you know, are you able to get online, is this working for you, what can we do to help support you, that, hopefully.
Just so you know, we had a very extensive conversation on that topic at our administrative meeting today, so, stay tuned, but we're working it, so.
Okay, all right, so that was our last meeting for the year, you have the summer curriculum work for approval tonight?
Yes.
Any questions? All right, excellent, and we will move on to-
4:25.
Board of Education meeting schedule.
Yeah, so, this is where we're at right now, I'd like to nail this down before, before we're into the new board year, I- I'd like to nail this down before, before we're into the new board year. Seems like everybody's, so, is available when, except for one, Jaclyn is, Jaclyn, Jackie Rukuya is not available on August 13th, but there are a bunch of conflicts with a number of, of next year's board members, so that was about the best we could do. So, unless there's an objection, I would proceed to move forward with this schedule. Ultimately, you'll have to approve the whole thing at your org meeting on July 2nd, but if I could get some kind of indication from the board as to whether this, this meeting schedule is acceptable, at least to those of you around the table, you don't have to vote it, you just have to say, yeah, it works for us, and that's what we'll go with. The other thing I wanted to point out to you, which is a change that needs to be made to this, this document, before you see it again for approval on July 2nd, is, and it's a good thing you know ahead of time, that because of the capital project, we'll be having the July 2nd, July 30th, and August 13th board meetings at Chancellor in the community room, because this room will not be fit for man or beast during the summer here. And I'm thinking about maybe having the district goals work session in the, the district office, because that will be, that won't be torn apart, but the library will be a shell of its former self.
July 2nd, you said we'd be there?
July 2nd, July 30th, August 13th at Chancellor, and this document will reflect that when it gets revised.
Does anybody have any problems with the dates for the summer?
Okay.
Great. Okay.
Thanks, Drew.
We want to jump down here.
Yeah, I think so. It's been, yes, so, if it pleases the board, we have a visitor who we are hoping to approve tonight. She's on our agenda, and she has very patiently sat through a very long meeting, so we'd like to move item 6.4 up ahead of the comments section, if that's all right with everybody.
Thank you.
Excellent. Okay. So, may I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the four-year probationary appointment of Kelsey Rice to the position of English as a New Language, ENL teacher, assigned to the Chancellor Livingston Elementary School, effective September 3rd, 2019, in the tenure area of English as a Second Language, at a salary of Step 2 MA plus 9, $64,166, in accordance with the RTA salary scheduled for 2019-20.
So moved?
Sure. Any discussion? All those in favor? Welcome aboard. Thank you for sticking it out. All right. So, we'll move back into comments section. Good news. Who's got good news?
Oh.
You don't get to go first.
Nobody else, no, no, I will, no, I will defer to, to any of you.
I'm guessing that maybe three of us have the same good news, which is that the academic awards ceremony was last night.
Yes.
And what a fantastic night. They, they have moved all of the scholarships and awards to this night rather than at graduation, and just seeing the breadth of kids that get awarded citizenship, academic, all kinds of stuff, it's really, really wonderful to see. And there are juniors there, and there are sophomores there, and it's really nice to see how hard our kids work and, and the fruits of their labor, so it's nice, like.
And the generosity of our community.
And the incredible diversity of our scholarships.
Yeah.
And I guess athletic awards tomorrow.
Tomorrow night.
Will be more good news.
Yeah.
Other good news?
Well, I, I would just say that my impression of, of Friday's Hawk Day was very positive. David Levine, who worked with the, the members of the student council and the class officers to, to train them before the planning of that activity, he was there as well. I have, I have never had so many staff members come up to me after any student activity and tell me how great it was, can we do it again next year, can we maybe do it twice next year at the beginning of the year, at the end of the year, yeah, yeah, yeah. They were, yeah, that's a good sign, because sometimes praise for activities like that is not as effusive as you'd like it to be, and they were, they were so supportive of it. I bumped into staff members over the weekend at various places, and they stopped me to tell me, oh, that was, that was great, that was the best thing we did, I just can't believe it. So, I think it was a successful thing, and hopefully they'll be able to build on it.
Excellent.
What did it look like? What, what did it?
Oh, it was absolute chaos, but, but, but good controlled chaos. I mean, the few times I was able to get out there between a meeting here and there, I mean, at one point I went out and there was this huge group of kids on the soccer field, and they were playing like, like, like frisbee, it wasn't frisbee golf, it was, it was like frisbee football, and I mean, no, they weren't like hitting, they weren't going to hit goals, they were like lining up and hiking and passing it, I mean, male, female students, they're all actively engaged, there was another group, I don't, there was stuff going all on, all over the, the campus, and kids were, nobody was, that I saw was like sitting around on the sidewalk lines, you know, twiddling their thumbs, like, when, when do I get out of here? I mean, there were a lot of kids, very actively engaged. And it was about half the day, I mean, they ran a, an assembly schedule, so they had shortened classes in the morning, and then I think they started around 11:00 and it went until, you know, the end of the school day, but, I don't, I got good, good feedback, so.
It's kind of like a field day, and they picked what activities they wanted to go to, there was art, there was karaoke, there was sports.
Karaoke.
Like a little bit of.
Yeah, no, it was great, yeah.
It's my kind of field day.
And our very own Emily Lyons was the hawk for the day.
Oh, she's the hawk. Oh, wait, now it's out.
We're there for the big reveal.
No, I missed the big reveal.
And she, she lived through the day, it was very hot in that costume.
Oh, I bet.
I was very concerned about her. She said, it wasn't the heat, it was the fact that I couldn't breathe.
Okay. It'd be a deterrent.
Was the big reveal after she ran down the track at the end of the day?
Yes.
I saw the, I saw the hawk running down the track, and I was thinking, please don't fall. Do not trip and fall, because we're going to have a problem. But I'm sorry, I guess I am.
Yeah, if you watch the video of this first one with the stage, you see Ed like run on the stage, I could just read his mind, like, don't fall off the stage, don't fall.
That's great, that's great.
That's great. All right. Any other good news? Okay. Old business? I have some old business. Our committees for next year, we have some holes, we have some horse trading to do. Currently, well, Matt hasn't formally decided on his committee choices, he's being very flexible so that we can fill committees as necessary. We have, we, we know that we have holes for audit, curriculum, and finance. Matt has, has thought that policy would be a good place for him to land, given his legal background. There are three of you that already requested it, so I don't know if you guys want to trade spots or not, and we need somebody for long-range planning. I think Jackie said that she would be interested in CDEP potentially, so if anybody's willing to take on long-range planning, it has not been meeting twice a month as it was at the beginning of the year, but if anybody's.
Is this in addition to?
It's in addition to the, the three standing committees, yeah.
It, I don't want to discourage anybody, but it has been a bigger lift than most other committees that only meet once a month. I'm just, to be fair, there's no reason to get people on committees if they can't.
Oh, you're saying it meets twice a month?
Well, it had been.
Yeah, okay.
It hasn't this spring.
Okay.
So, it, I don't, remains to be seen whether that's going to be the case.
It's really up to, to, to the members, I guess.
So, Matt, have you had some time to think about which committees might work for you?
I mean, again, Laura, very flexible.
I know, I appreciate that.
You know, I hope to observe on most of the committees at some point, so wherever, you know, where we need to fill a spot.
Could, could I be so bold as to ask a question that may or may not kind of steer this? And if you don't want to answer, or don't want to answer now, I certainly respect that. And it's not like we need an answer immediately, but it would be helpful to know what your availability is during the week, during the day, evenings, whatever, I mean, we've already worked a couple of, no, no shame there, I mean, we've worked some committees around Jaclyn's schedule, and, and for some of them, we've met, we meet at 5:00 in the afternoon, we're done by 6:30. So, we've, we've accommodated her schedule. If I don't know that anybody has an accommodation we need to work around, then we, you know, we can't plan it, so if you, if you want to give that some thought and let me know, that's, that's fine.
Well, if I have to comment on it now, it's pretty flexible, actually, unless I'm out of town on a business meeting, I go off and work from home, so basically, you know, I have a time of day, I'm pretty flexible.
Okay, well, that's good.
I'm going to afford me out of town, that would be your limit, hopefully.
Sure, sure. And I, I would be lying to you if I, if I told you that we never had to reschedule a board committee meeting for an entire year. I mean, it happens frequently, so it's not, it's not like the end of the world. What I typically do is, once we get this, the X's firmed up, then I spend about three quarters of my summer trying to actually put together a schedule that works for people, but that's, that's what we do, and we get a schedule, I, it doesn't take three quarters of the summer usually, about half the summer. It can be challenging, but we work something out, so, so we really just need to know who's going to go where for these final pieces.
We absolutely need somebody for long-range planning, and the other three that are still sort of tentative, we've got some wiggle room, but long-range planning is, is the big hole right now. So, if you would like, I can give you until the next meeting to decide, but it has to be decided before the rework, so you've got a deadline.
All right, so let's.
So, what, to recap, basically, someone on policy, think about if they don't want to be in policy.
Yeah.
Correct. And then someone has to decide about long-range, someone additionally has to decide about long-range.
Also, if I'm just doing a lot of simple findings, that's, someone really wants to be on policy.
All right. Okay. Well, if nobody's willing to move off policy, that's you, and you, and you, you know, then, okay, all right, then we'll, we'll leave it at that. Then Matt, that's great, if you would do auto curriculum and what else, that would be fantastic. Okay. All right. So, I will confirm with Jackie that she is interested in CDEP, and then we have long-range planning still to go.
Yeah. Just make a point for long-range planning, it's a very important committee to the work that we're doing now, so just ask everyone to think about it. It's really important, so we do need, we need somebody on it.
And when does it, when do you typically?
Well, right now, we've been meeting at 7:30 in the morning, but.
7:30 in the morning for me!
But it, yeah, no, if it's a 5:00 meeting, it's 5:00 meeting, so.
Well, let's also make sure Jaclyn, Jackie knows about this, because she's part of it, too, so.
Yes, no, she is, she is. So, I will send out a note this week and just sort of remind everybody where we are right now and the hole that we have that is relatively significant, and.
So, the hole we have now is just long-range planning?
It's long-range planning, and I have to confirm CDEP.
Okay, okay.
Oh, Jackie, Jackie. That's going to get tricky.
Does she go by Jackie, do we know?
Jackie.
Okay. Because I don't.
Correct.
So, all right, so I will send out a note this week.
And Steve might want to do long-range.
He's on.
Oh, he's already on it.
Steve's already on it, yeah. So, Steve and Diana and one more. All right. Excellent. Okay. Any other old business?
I don't know.
Okay. Uh, our public has left, so there will be no comment. Any other?
Yeah, two things.
Mark has something.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Mark.
I just want to give you one last reminder about the Baptist County School Board Association Dinner and Annual Meeting on June 20th at Harlequin High School, 6:00 PM. It's going to be in the Culinary Arts Cafe. Just so you're all aware, I've been nominated to be president of the association for the next two years, so see how that goes, you're aware of all the good things going on, but I have it settled.
Congratulations. That's great news.
Good luck.
That's great news.
So, if you're interested in going to the, the dinner slash annual meeting and being able to vote for Mark for president of, I'm not sure, he's probably not running opposed, so.
No.
You're voluntold.
That doesn't take any, anything away from you.
Congratulations. Take my, my good luck.
But, but let Whitney know, because they want reservations, I forget what the final date is, but they don't really want you just walking in the door and assuming you'll, you'll get fed, they need to plan that, so let Whitney know if you're interested in going, and she'll call in some reservations to Kelly.
All right. So, Diane, you put in our packets about the conference?
That was on my list.
Oh, it's on your list, okay, sorry.
Yeah, but no, go ahead, go ahead, no, no, no.
Yeah, I just think we should decide when we're going to go, so.
Yeah, yeah, what, what is the deadline for that?
Which one are we talking about?
NISBA, the one in Rochester.
It's July, isn't it?
It wasn't, it was.
Yeah, early bird.
The early bird was July, yeah.
Yes, and then you had it by August.
I'm just trying, I'm just trying to remember what the date was, might be, might be in my bulletin to you.
Oh, what is the date for it?
October 24th, 25th?
Yeah, I think that's it.
It doesn't have to be so far away. Okay. Three days.
Yeah, it's 24th through the 26th, and July 15th is the early bird deadline.
October 24th, and would we have to leave the night before, is it that far?
Uh, it's in Rochester, so it's.
Or can we go in that morning, we can go that, the morning?
Well, again.
Last time we went that morning.
No, I think we did. I think we did, I think we went earlier in the day, on the day where the sessions start, like at late afternoon or whatever, so, yeah, and that's, it's three and a half to Syracuse, another hour-ish to Rochester, so it's a long drive, but you can do it in a couple of days. No, you can, you can do it, you can do it today, as long as it's not snowing.
What's the, what's, how long is the drive?
It's about, uh, four and a half.
Four hours.
Yeah.
But Jo's a great driver.
Yeah, she's coming. Jo's a great driver.
Yeah, brick on the pedal and.
I'm sorry, she's.
So, I mean, it's, it's a haul, but.
It's doable.
Yeah, it is doable, I mean, we've gone to Buffalo before and driven ourselves, so that's even worse. But anyway.
Okay.
So, let us know, July 15th is the deadline, and then, you know, we don't only have to worry about registering for NISBA, but also, you know, accommodations for, for the couple of days we're out there, so.
Yeah, and there aren't as many hotel rooms.
Not nearly, no, not nearly as many.
Less, less, more than La Crosse, though, right?
Definitely.
Anything's more than Lake Placid, yeah, of course. Yeah, you don't have to stay in the Shining Hotel.
Thank God.
But just, just leave it at that. And the other, the other thing under other is the, the Mid Hudson School Study Council's having their school law conference, I think it's on August 2nd at Mount St. Mary's College, not sure what the deadline date is. If you're interested in going, let me know. I haven't seen anything on the NISBA school law conference, which is usually up in Latham.
Yeah, and it's usually within a week or so of the other.
So, that's the other one that people from our board have, have gone to. And there's school law stuff up at the, the, the annual conference, too, so, yeah, you would have to go early for that, no. So, anyway, let us know if you're interested, and if you are great, and if you're not, it's your loss, I guess, because it's usually a great learning experience. Okay, that's, that's all I have.
Anybody have any other other? All right.
June.
Move on to action items. Would anybody like to remove anything from the consent agenda? None. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the consent agenda?
So moved?
Second.
Any questions? I would like to thank yet again the Ryan Beck Science Foundation and the Ryan Beck PTSO for their incredibly generous donations to our kids, they're really wonderful. All those in favor? That's you now, if that motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation? May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve a leave request under the Family and Medical Leave Act from Megan Craft to commence on or about October 10th, 2019, with such leave to be taken as paid medical leave through the period of disability as certified by a physician in writing to the extent of her approved sick leave, and thereafter such leave to be taken as unpaid medical leave through February 14th, 2020 or thereabouts.
Some of?
Any discussion? All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve a leave request under the Family and Medical Leave Act from Kimberly Sneed to commence on or about September 12th, 2019, with such leave to be taken as paid medical leave through the period of disability as certified by a physician in writing to the extent of her approved sick leave, and thereafter such leave to be taken as unpaid medical leave through October 24th, 2019 or thereabouts.
Some of?
Any discussion? All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve a modification of the leave request under the Family and Medical Leave Act from Laura Natalie, having commenced on June 10th, 2019, with such leave to be taken as paid medical leave through the period of disability as certified by a physician in writing through June 26th, 2019, to the extent of her approved sick leave, and thereafter such leave to be taken as unpaid childcare leave, the leave period now to be extended through September 8th, 2020.
Some of?
Any discussion? All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. May I have a motion to move into executive session for the purposes of discussing the employment of particular persons?
Some of?
All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes, and moving into executive session.